As a preliminary matter, this is John Regan, Vice Chair of the Auburn Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members of the -- anticipated on this agenda. President can hear me. Ron Brooks. Scott Ren. Please answer when your name is called. Steve Chambers. Nicholas Lynch. Scott, you all set yet?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now. Town officials and employees participating when I call your name. Town Planner Adam and I. Staff Assistant Rachel Pressley. DDIS Director Darlene Coyle.
Here.
Good evening. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Planning Board is Tuesday, May 26, 2020. Now called the order at 7:00 P.M. This meeting is being conducted remotely, assisted with Governor Baker's ---- of March 12, 2020, due to the state of emergency, Commonwealth, due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we advise and direct the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the Governor's order suspends requirement ---- of the opening meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, Town's website, allows public bodies to be entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening by remote participation for the public only, although some members of the ---- some members of the Planning Board are physically located in its selectmen's meeting room in Town Hall. Those members and employees are practicing social distancing in accordance with the Governor's orders. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, call 1-312-757-3121 and enter access code 133747477. Or the public can join via computer at gotomeeting.com/join/133747477. Remote access information has been posted on the Town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television. Accordingly, those members of the Planning Board employees and members of the public who participate, please be aware that other folks will be able to see you. Please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting materials, all supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the Town's website. Public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Meeting business ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda before we do so. Permit me to cover some ground rules. Effective and clear, conduct of our business, ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Vice Chair John Regan of the Board, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comments or questions or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to speak clearly, in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you. State your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. After members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comment as follows. The Chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has listed all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. If technical difficulties arise, Chair suspends meeting while make attempts to resolve are made. Keep accurate minutes noting any disconnections and reconnections of the members. With all that said, have a motion to open the meeting?
I'll make that motion, Scott Ren.
Do you have a second?
This is Nicholas Lynch, I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So Scott, you voted aye. Nick voted aye. Steve, you voted aye. Aye, aye, it is a vote. Okay, so first thing on our agenda is the A&R S&amp;K Development, 373 Oxford Street North. Do we have any comments from the Board? I'll call you by name. Scott?
No comments, John.
Nicholas Lynch?
None, John.
Steve Chambers?
No comment.
Do we have any members of the public who would like to comment? There being none, I'm calling for a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve the A&R plan for S&amp;K Development, 373 Oxford Street North.
Could I have a second, please?
I'll second it, this is Nicholas Lynch.
All those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Myself, aye, it is a vote. Next on the agenda, applicant Eastland Partners Incorporated, request for site plan approval under section 3.2.2.1, 5.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaw, two-family dwelling and property located at 2325 Albert Street, Auburn, Mass. Map 65, parcel 42. This has been continued since 2012, 2020. Good.
Clay Williams is on the line for Eastland Partners. I'm not sure if Dick Steve O'Connell was also.
Clayton?
Can you hear me all right? There was a little bit of feedback there a minute ago.
Yep, I can hear you fine.
So, we're here before you today through this continued hearing from May the 12th. After some changes to our engineering plan, which Steve will go over, we submitted a new site plan on Thursday for your review that you should have in packets in front of you. And with that, I guess I'll tee it off to Steve to discuss the changes that were made.
Thank you, Clay. Thank you, members of the Board. This is 2325 Albert Street, which fronts on Blaker Street. There were two more or less simple changes. In the lower left-hand corner of the lot, DPW had asked for a culvert pipe under the access drive for the stormwater basin, so this plan indicates that. You'll see it by the notation that says, "Install 12-inch Class 5 RCP pipe with flared ends." So we did that. As of today, with a phone call from them this afternoon, they're satisfied with that under one condition. They would like that pipe to show up as a dark line, and they said that they'd be happy with that condition. The second item they commented on today with the phone call was the proposed foundation drain in that same part of the lot. They want that foundation drain to discharge in the area of that proposed 12-inch concrete pipe. Again, that change would also be acceptable as a condition of approval. They're just more or less drafting changes. Those are the only revisions related to this lot. Everything else was acceptable to DPW per our conversation this afternoon. If there's any other questions I can answer, I'm happy to do so.
Do we have any questions from the Board? Scott?
No questions on my end.
Nick?
No, no questions.
Steve?
No.
Okay, my only question is, when we had this two meetings ago, I had mentioned that the sewer service only shows one line going to the building. And you said you would correct it and show both, and I don't see that on this plan. I see one line for the sewer.
So both are there, Mr. Regan. One of them comes out towards Blaker Street, and then the other actually comes out towards Albert Street Subdivision Road.
Okay, I got it.
Yep. Not as traditional as the other lots that we submitted.
No, when you're coming in off of Albert Street, it looks like it goes into the corner of the house, so you should be good there. And the other one has a bend on it right before the foundation, the one coming off of Blaker Street?
Yeah, it'll be, there'll be a clean out in the garage floor of that unit.
Okay. Then I have no further comment. Any comments from the public? There being none, any further comments from the Board? Being none, any comments from Adam?
No, no comments. Just, the board just said that the site plan was conditional, so I don't know if you could tell me anything else.
So I need a motion to approve with the conditions set forth that the Town, the gentleman just read before this with the proposed drain pipe directing runoff, and the second one, the proposed foundation drain being directed towards the depression. Those need to be conditions of this. I need a motion to approve that with those two conditions.
Scott Ren, I'll make a motion to approve with the aforementioned conditions.
May I have a second?
This is Nicholas Lynch, I'll second it.
All those in favor, Nicholas?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And myself, aye, it is a vote. Okay, moving on to --
Don, can you close the public hearing?
Pardon me? Who's speaking?
Don, can you close that?
Rachel, close the public hearing.
Close the hearing, thank you, Rachel.
Thanks, Rachel. Could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
This is Nick, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
May I have a second?
This is Steve Chambers, I'll second.
All those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Nicholas?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Myself, aye, it is a vote. Technically, I didn't make a motion, I have a motion made to open that public hearing.
It was already continued.
Okay. So second on or third on the agenda, applicant Eastland Partners Incorporated requests for site plan approval under section 3.2.2.1 and 5.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a two-family dwelling and property located at 2830 Albert Street, Auburn, Mass. Map 65, parcel 70.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. Similarly to the last lot, there were a couple of minor revisions made from comments from DPW. All of those are shown. And once again, I'll defer to Steve O'Connell to walk the board through the changes that have been made.
Thank you. For the record, Steve O'Connell from Turning Point Engineering. So all of DPW's comments have been addressed on this lot with the exception of one, which is going to lead me to requesting a continuance. But just to bring you up to speed, the stormwater basin at the rear of that lot, you know, is something that is evolving as we're looking to refine and improve the stormwater design from the 40B project up the hill. And that's going to result in a couple of more revisions to this lot, so we're looking to increase separation. We're looking to get the slab of this dwelling unit above the high water elevation in that stormwater basin. All positive things as a result of the conversation with Town Engineer and DPW today. So with that, you know, we'll be looking, requesting a continuance for this lot so we can address those items adequately.
And would you have that ready by the next meeting, or you want to wait two meetings?
Yes, I believe we will. They're straightforward, and we've got, I already got a jump start on them.
Adam, you have any comments?
I, I got it for June 9.
Need a motion from the Board to continue this portion of the hearing to June 9?
This is Nick, I'll make a motion to continue the hearing on this till June 9.
May I have a second?
Scott Ren, I'll second.
All those in favor, Steve?
Aye.
Nicholas?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And myself, aye, it is a vote.
Thank you.
Next on the list, applicant Eastland Partners Incorporated requests for a site plan approval under section 3.2.2.1 and 5.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a two-family dwelling and property located at 3133 Albert Street, Auburn, Mass. Map 65, parcel 68.
Just like the last two hearings, same sort of thing. We had a couple of minor revisions, and I'll let Steve O'Connell walk us through those. Thank you again. For the record, Steve O'Connell, Turning Point Engineering. The item that DPW commented on the last meeting for this application on this lot was the sewer tie-in out at the sewer main in Albert, in the Albert Street subdivision road. We adequately addressed their comment, and they were satisfied. There were no other changes on this plan.
Could you please review those comments, please?
Yep, so they were, they weren't discussed at the meeting in detail, but by telephone last Wednesday, Mr. Coyle wanted to make sure that we had adequate separation of the connections at the main. So we have at least two feet separation where the TY comes into the main. What he also wanted to make sure was that because sewer and water services are already installed to each of these lots as the road was built, and they were inspected by the water and sewer departments, he just wanted to make sure that we accurately showed the locations of where and how they were built with the proper separation. So you'll see water and sewer services in the road that look kind of gray in color.
Yep.
Those are existing. Those were built and inspected, and then just outside the right-of-way from there, all the way to the unit, it's a darker line. That's where the connection that will occur to the unit, the proposed. So we have proper separation of water and sewer, and the water and sewer you see in the street is existing as-built locations inspected by each respective department.
Okay, so the two sewer lines, services coming out of the house there, two feet apart at the main. So I think I remember this being discussed at a previous meeting, and I was told that one was going to go in the sewer manhole, and one was going to go in the main to create the separation.
Yeah, that was before we realized that they had been installed and inspected. That was the first meeting we had a little over a month ago. Were able to obtain as-built information, so this is the result that was satisfactory to Engineering DPW.
Okay, so on the plan, when we get the final record, everything's all said and done, can we show a dimension between the two TYs that it's actually two feet? Center to center, I believe?
Yeah, that'll be part of the, yep, that'll be part of the road, the road as-built.
Any comment from the Board? Scott?
No comments.
Nicholas?
I have no comments.
Steve?
No comments.
Any comments from the public? There being none, I request a motion for approval from the, someone from the Board?
Don, we got a motion, close the hearing first. We close it first, add it back, what's the thing?
Need a motion to close the hearing.
This is Nick, I'll make a motion, a second.
May I need a second?
This is Nick, I'll make that motion.
A second, Scott Ren?
All those in favor, Steve?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Myself, it is a vote. May I have a motion to approve based on what was discussed?
Scott Ren, I'll make that motion. Approve?
Nicholas Lynch, I'll second it.
All those in favor, Steve?
Aye.
Nicholas?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Myself as an aye, it is a vote. Next on the agenda is CGT Incorporated requesting a special permit and site plan approval under 3.9.2.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a drive-through coffee shop located at 711 Southford Street, Auburn, Mass. Map 61, parcel 37. This has been continued from 5/12/2020, and I believe, Adam, they want to continue that till June?
Correct. Last I heard, there hasn't really been any further development. The developer's still waiting on mass stop for highway access, so yeah, we can continue this till June 9.
Does anybody of the Board, anyone on the Board have an objection to continuing this till June? Nick?
No objections.
Scott?
Same, no objection here.
Steve?
No objection.
May I have a motion to continue to the June 9 hearing?
This is Nick, I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
A second, Scott Ren?
All those in favor, Steve?
Aye.
Nicholas?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Then I myself, it is a vote. Next on the agenda is applicant Mossad Family LLC requesting modified site plan approval under section 9.4.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the parking, landscaping, and site layout reconfiguration of a property located at 54 Faith Ave. Do I need a motion to open that?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone here from representing the Mossad family?
I can give you a quick update.
Okay.
I took your office packets and email from the engineer, Scott. The Board of Selectmen just voted to approve the new roadway and to transfer the old roadway to the Mossad family. They were hopeful to get new site plans to us for modification, but they didn't have time, so hopefully they'll have it for the next meeting, again, June 9. If you'd like to continue this till then, that would be great.
Could I have a motion to continue this application to the June 9 meeting?
Scott Ren, I'll make a motion to continue the Mossad Family LLC requesting site plan modification to the June 9 meeting.
May I have a second?
This is Nicholas Lynch, I'll second it.
All those in favor, Steve?
Aye.
Nicholas?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Myself as an aye, it's a vote. We're into other business. Subdivision modification, the reserve at Ashworth Hill. Site modification decisions, Eastland Partners, 27 and 29 Albert Street. Discussion, Ashworth Hill Division request for a lot release for 2325 Albert Street, Lot 5.
Let me take the subdivision modification there first.
So what is the discussion on subdivision modification, Adam?
They submitted, per the Board's request in the last meeting, the changes that were being made as they developed that subdivision. They submitted new site plans last week. They went out to present them again this morning for peer review. Charlotte, Sabrina, and Carl have not comments on submission.
Okay, so we really can't do anything with that until we get the comments back from the peer review?
Right, they want to present what they want.
Then they'll have to call you to get on the agenda for the next meeting, correct?
Yeah, they'll be on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay. Site plan modifications, that's the decisions for Eastland Partners, 27 and 29 Albert Street?
Yep.
Could you review that, please?
There's no action to take on those.
There's what?
There's no action to take on those, just have to be signed in the near future.
Okay. And then discussions, Ashworth Hill subdivision request for a lot release, 2325 Albert Street, Lot 5. Any discussion over that, Adam?
Just the site plan for that lot. If Clay Williams has anything further to add, we're looking for a lot, he's done with the last five, John. Clay Street, if I was going to come up with Clay Street, we're going to wait until that street is paid for that.
Any comments from the Board?
Eastland Partners, thanks for that intro, Adam. Pretty much covered it all. Since Blaker Street is already paved and we extended this lot, that's why we are requesting this lot for a release tonight after your site plan approval.
So, how do we move going forward, Adam?
There were no comments on this, on holding this up from DPW or anybody else. I don't think there's a need to hold up this particular lot release. If the Board wants to take a vote, a motion to approve the lot release, you can do that. I see no need to hold it up.
Okay. Could I have a motion to approve this lot release? Oh, first, is there any other comments from the public?
Through the Chair, real quick, Adam, did you say that all the heads, they had no comment on this issue?
Yeah, they didn't have any comments.
Any comments from the public? There being none?
Scott Ren, I'll make a motion to release lots 27 and 29.
May I have a second?
Sorry, can you repeat that, that motion, Scott?
My apologies. I'll make the motion to release lots 23 and 25.
Could I have a second?
Lot 5, excuse me.
Could I have a second?
This is Nick, I'll second it.
All those in favor, Steve Chambers? All those in favor, Steve Chambers? Steve, you still with us?
Yeah, uh, aye.
Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Scott Ren?
Aye.
It's an aye from me, it is a vote.
Thank you.
How do we discuss Albert Street, Lot 5 separately, or is that...
It's the same.
Discussion on electric signatures, consider provision, MGO 11110G. Do we need to have any discussion on that?
So, it was decided to hold off and discuss this from the last meeting until today, until there's a full board to talk about this, there's still no full board. It's simply a matter, this general law allows the board to provide me electronics and everything, instead of coming into Town Hall to sign various forms, you could do it remotely. However, that doesn't include the my laws for an A and R plans, so, because we still get A and Rs, it seems to be pretty regularly, to the board if they wanna bother going forward and adopt these electronic signatures, or just come into the Board of Selectmen's office like you have been to sign various forms. We will be operating more hours in the near future as the phase is developed. And there has been a drive-up booth install at Town Hall, it's not open yet, but that may be an option.
Oh, I thought they were gonna start charging to come in, it was a toll booth.
If, if I may, through the chair, we do also, can bring out the orders or decisions for signature if somebody is worried about coming into the building.
Very good, darling, thank you.
Without the full board, I would hold off on taking any action on this, and if you want to just not bother with the electronic signatures, that's your option to discuss.
We'll wait till we have a full board. We'll wait till we have a full board. Everybody in agreement with that? Scott, you in agreement with waiting for a full board?
Yeah, I, I have no objections, I'll probably go and put wet signatures on things at the Selectmen's office, that's just my preference, I deal with a lot of electronic signing in my business, but I, if people wanna do it, I'm fine with it, if you wanna wait for a board, a full board to have a discussion further, that's fine as well.
Nicholas, you feel the same?
I do.
Okay, Steve?
Uh, I could go either way, it doesn't matter to me.
All right, we'll wait for a full board. Next on the agenda is meeting minutes, 4/14/2020. Who's got the mic problem? Okay, back, meeting minutes, 4/14/2020. Could I have a motion to approve?
Scott Ren, I'll make that motion to approve the meeting minutes of April 14th, 2020.
Could I have a second?
Steve Chambers, second.
All those in favor, Steve?
Aye.
Nick?
I don't think I can, since I don't think I was at that actual meeting.
Okay. Scott?
Aye.
And myself, as an aye, that is a vote, isn't it, Adam? The three?
Yes.
That is a vote. All right, meeting minutes, could I have a motion to approve meeting minutes for 5/12/2020?
This is Nick, I'll make that motion to approve the minutes from 5/12/2020.
Could I have a second?
I don't think you do, me and Steve were both absent.
So was I. So we can't make a motion?
Yeah, okay.
Can't make a vote on that.
We can hold that till the next meeting.
Okay, that'll be continued to the next meeting. Okay, new business unforeseen by the chair, I don't have any member town planner update?
Uh, yeah, no, no relatives.
Could I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion, this is Nick Lynch.
Could I have a second?
Scott Ren, I'll second.
All those in favor say aye, Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Scott Ren?
Aye.
Myself, it is a vote, the next meeting will be June 9th, 2020. Thank you.